And ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment, I'm going to ask you all to join with me in a moment of silence. But let me tell you something about Paul Coffin, who recently passed. I knew Paul personally, a great individual. Paul worked in the school system for many years, thirty-six years, to be honest, thirty-six years it says here, at, and the last, the last is nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and twelve, at West Elementary School. Paul served as a basketball coach, a football coach, and really a leader for many, many young boys and girls. So please, in celebration of his life, in respect for his family, and to honor Paul as an individual, please join with me in a moment of silence. I thank you very much. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? Not seeing any hands from the people here, so I'm going to move on to our next item, which is our student representatives. And just to be different, let's start with South tonight.
Okay, so Plymouth South will be hosting the MIA's District C Principal and Athletic Directors Meeting this Tuesday at nine AM. Senior College Financial Planning Night will take place on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at North, starting at six-thirty PM. This night is consistently proven to be very informative for families as they plan for college. School Council will meet on September twenty-fifth at six-thirty at PSHS as we embark on a new two-year improvement plan. Students and parents are reminded that our first day of school packets with all the forms and documents had to be signed and passed in last Friday. Please return those to the high school ASAP. The freshman class will meet September seventeenth for their annual meeting and club fair in an effort to get more students involved in their school activities. Students from Spain will be visiting us next week. Host families from both North and South High Schools will welcome our guests on September twenty-first, and will have a one-to-one exchange as our hosting students will travel to Spain in the spring. Plymouth South and Plymouth North will welcome foreign exchange students from Milan, Italy, in October tenth, in October. Ten students will be auditing courses in high schools and spending approximately two weeks here in Plymouth. This is the beginning of an exchange opportunity that will see our students travel to Milan over February break. An application for the host family and students to travel to Milan was emailed to families last week. Administration is hosting staff and family tailgate, the lower field behind the stadium, on Friday, September twenty-seventh, before the home football game. Please join us. PSAT School Day for our sophomores and juniors will take place in September. During the testing time, our freshmen will be heading off to campus, selecting to visit one of six colleges for tours of the campus as we expose them to post-secondary education. Freshmen will take the PSATs at a later date this fall. Our annual open house will take place October third, beginning at six-thirty. Parents will have the opportunity to follow their student's schedule and meet their teachers. Our Booster Club will be on hand with Panther gear for sale, and PYDC will have a table with information on resources available to families as well for the well-being of their children. And then, we are also, will be attending CMAS for Student Council, which I'm very excited about, so there is that.
Okay, Abigail, thank you very much.
Okay. Full North High School Open House for Full North High School, oh my god, will, sorry, will be held on Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty-nineteen, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. Parents and guardians are invited to attend, follow their student's schedule, and meet with their child's teachers. Parents and members of the class of 2020 should visit the North website or view the PNHS Daily Bulletin located on our school television daily for important up-to-date yearbook deadlines and information. The information on the Plymouth North High School website and on the Daily Bulletin contains important information that will prevent you from missing any yearbook deadlines. Senior bios and portraits are due Tuesday, October fifteenth. Ten-dollar fee if not submitted on time. Plymouth North High School encourages all students to be involved with various club sports and activities it offers. Find something that interests you and become a part of our after-school community, or attend one of our many scheduled sporting events, and support our athletic teams. Beginning this week, Full North High School will be hosting college visits during all four lunches. These visits are for students to speak with the other representative from the college or university in order to learn about what each has to offer. A full listing of the visiting colleges, universities, and armed services can be found on the Plymouth North website and on the Plymouth North High School Daily Bulletin located on our school televisions daily. Both North and South High School College Fair. Both North and South High Schools invite all college-bound students, parents, and guardians to attend the college fair where over a hundred and fifty colleagues, colleges, universities, and armed services will be able to speak with. The college fair will be held on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty-nineteen, from six PM to eight PM in the Full North High School gym. The Full North High School Varsity Homecoming Game will be held on Saturday, October nineteenth, at seven PM against Hingham. Homecoming Dance is Friday, October eighteenth, from six-thirty PM to ten PM. Tickets will go on sale October ninth through October sixteenth, before or after school, and room three-thirty-one or two-forty-seven. The cost of the tickets is fifteen dollars each, or ten dollars plus two canned goods. Check or money order only made out to Plymouth North High School Students Activities Fund. Life Touch will be taking photos on Wednesday, October second, and Thursday, October third. Student photo make-up date is Friday, October, November eighth. Breakfast is an important way to start the day and is available daily through all students from seven AM to seven-twenty AM. Breakfast can be purchased in the caf or in the gym lobby concession stand. Students who receive a free lunch or also receive free breakfast, reduced lunch, students pay thirty cents, and the regular cost for breakfast is a dollar fifty. Starting Tuesday, September tenth, late buses will be available on Thursdays and Tuesdays. Late buses will depart from Full North High School at four oh five on those days. Principal Pete Parson offers a weekly parent page that provides information on what's happening at North. This is a great way to start, stay current on all things Full North High School. Mr. Parson posts this through his Twitter account. Please follow him on Twitter for notifications of his page. The Senior Financial Planning Night will be held Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at Full North High School, beginning at six-thirty PM. Life Touch Sports Picture Day is Friday, September twenty-seventh. Follow the link below. There will be a FAFSA workshop on Tuesday, October eighth, from five to seven PM. At this event, the guidance department will help students, slash, parents navigate through the FAFSA worksheet and answer questions. Parent FAFSA workshops are by appointment only. Please contact your child's guidance department to reserve your space. Classes will be held in Computer Labs two-twenty-seven, three-thirty-three. The Gold Gold Campaign will be celebrated on Friday, September twenty-seventh. Students will be encouraged to wear gold and donate to the gold boot, to which all proceeds go to fight pre-diabetic cancer. PSATs will be given during the school day on October sixteenth for students in grade nine through eleven. Schedules will be adjusted so that all students can take the appropriate level test. Guidance will provide more information for students in the coming weeks. The Full North Community will be welcoming twenty-one Spanish students from Madrid. All these students are advanced English speakers. While staying with host families, students will visit sites in and around Plymouth during their stay. The halfway mark for first term is on October fourteenth. Parents should check Aspen for a progress report on grades. Only students who are in danger of failing will get information mailed home. Teachers should have their grade books updated by the end of the day on October fourth. We encourage all families to follow us on Twitter and Facebook, and to utilize our website for all happenings at North. The first school council meeting of the year will be held Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. School council meetings will be held in the library. All meetings begin again at six PM. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank both of you for your reports. Always a lot of information. No questions from school committee? Moving on to the next agenda item. Dr. Maestis, you have some, not really new administrators, but talk to us anyway.
Yes, tonight, we are very pleased to introduce some administrative appointments that we have in the district. They are veterans to the Plymouth Public Schools. They are going to be assuming and have assumed different roles here in the school district. So tonight, I'd like to highlight Courtney Trifaletti. Courtney is at Indianbrook. She's Assistant Principal. Come on up, Courtney. And Courtney is, was a staff member at Indianbrook, was an interim last year when we moved Mr. Harold over to Federal Furnace. And then we have Erica Manfredi. Erica, come on up. I know she probably doesn't want to be embarrassed, but Erica is now the principal of Indianbrook Elementary. And so tonight, we have the administrative team from Indianbrook, and we're just pleased to have you here tonight. We also have Sarah Grant. Sarah is at Plymouth South Middle School, and Sarah is a staff member at South Middle, and she is interim Assistant Principal, because Joe Murphy is now the interim principal at Plymouth South Middle School. And Joe was Assistant Principal. And we met with him last year, and he has taken on this challenge. And we're very pleased to have four individuals here tonight that we believe can really help our children and our staff navigate the educational pathway they have in front of them. And we're very pleased with the start of school, and they've done a fantastic job to move things forward. So Dr. Sorenson, I introduce four new members of the Plymouth Public School Administrative Team.
Glad to have you all here at the school committee meeting, so let's start with Indianbrook. Tell us something about Indianbrook.
Something about Indian, I mean, I think Indianbrook is the best school in town, but I might be biased. Indianbrook is a wonderful school with a wonderful staff, we're a large school, but we have, there are lots of great things that happen at Indianbrook between, we have, robotics is amazing at Indianbrook. Our One School, One Book is really cool, if you can ever get to that. I won't, I can't give away this year's secrets. We just, we have a great staff that really, really care about children.
Tell us about one of your needs.
Oh.
Only one, though, only one.
How much time do you, um, I think the biggest need we have right now is for the social-emotional piece. We're seeing more and more children coming in without coping strategies, without, with backgrounds that are really impacting their ability to learn. And that's, that's really a huge issue right now. And we, and we have teachers that really, really want to work with these kids, but they don't always know how.
Right, right. And same two questions for Plymouth South.
Sarah, do you want to go first? I have a lot to say. Do you want to go first?
You may out.
I just, if I could just take a moment, just say, Paul Coffin was a great educator for Plymouth Public Schools, and for me, he'll always be Mr. Coffin. He was a gym teacher for me when I was a student at Minutemen Elementary School. And there were days when I didn't really feel too well, and I knew it was a gym day, and I would very hardly get dressed, brush my teeth. I didn't want to miss a bus because I knew I was going to be with Mr. Coffin. And thank you for the extended moment of silence, because he was, he was a great educator, great guy. I do have a lot, a lot of, a lot of things to say about Plymouth South Middle School. I started there a long time ago as a substitute teacher, and to get myself from there to here, sometimes I wonder how I did that, but I think that we are, we're, we're experiencing some of the same challenges that Indianbrook is, in, in the sense of social-emotional learning. We've formulated a plan. Dr. Grant and I met extensively over the summertime, and it's, it's the bulk of our professional development for this school year, to give the teachers a toolbox, if you will, to better equip them with handling some of the, some of the things that the kids are bringing into school. I think when the teachers were educated and they got their licensure, whether that was a short time ago or a long time ago, they weren't trained to handle some of these, some of these things that the kids are coming to school with. And they're there, we're a public school, and we have to deal with it, and we have to educate them. And so I think it's our responsibility as administrative team to equip our teachers with that, and we're working on that. And so, any support we can get from the school committee for that would be greatly appreciated. And I think I've started to look within our community and see what relationships we can build with outside agencies and bring them into, and Dr. Halpin's been a great help with that, and I'll continue to pick his brain and to bring some of those resources down to Plymouth South Middle School. So, thank you.
Okay. Committee members with questions or comments? Okay, thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Transportation, Special Education, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, as you recall, we had our Special Education Transportation on the agenda last year, School Committee. We actually had one of our parent groups come in and talk a little bit about Special Education Transportation, and Mr. Costin and Dr. Rogers spent some time contemplating how we navigate the road ahead. And they have consulted with a group that has prepared a report tonight to kind of give you a state of that particular condition. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Costin, and he can kind of give you a preview of what we're here to see tonight, and introduce our guests, so we can navigate a microphone over to Mr. Costin. That would be great.
I guess you're not supposed to speak, because the microphone's a little.
They know I speak too much. Excuse me. Thank you. As Dr. Maestis says, said, Dr. Rogers and myself were very aware that our transportation for Special Education is a growing part of the budget, and it's also a very specialized and difficult transportation to manage. There are a lot of needs that we need to meet, and we need to do it cost-effectively, but we also need to provide service for, for these students. So we recognize that our, our contract with our current vendor is coming due on six-thirty of next year, of twenty. And we wanted to, some assistance from an outside group. In your attachments, you'll see that this is a collaborative study that is launched with the Mass Department of Education and the Mass Association of Pupil Transportation. And we wanted to have an objective look at how we operate our system, any improvements we can make, any ways that we can be more cost-effective, options that are out there that we're not aware of. We are also dealing with, like large buses, lack of competition, and it especially hits Plymouth because we are so large, that many vendors are reluctant to bid and take on a system of this size. So we looked at some strategies and options for that. And so tonight, we have Colleen Kavanaugh, who is the Administrative Coordinator for the Massachusetts Association of Pupil Transportation, and Consultant of Pupil Transportation Consulting, and Mr. Martin Finnegan, Consultant and Transportation Director for the Case Collaborative, to go over their report, which you have attached, was, is part of your attachment, and to give their, their observations and their findings.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you for having us, and I just want to, you know, thank Gary and acknowledge him for taking the opportunity through the state contract that they have with the Mass Association of Pupil Transportation to come out and do a, a cost review with Plymouth Public Schools. Just a little, a brief little background, since two thousand and four, the state, through either the Legislature or the Department of Ed, has looked at ways to assist districts in the area of Special Education Transportation. As we all know, it is a very large part of our budget. Plymouth is not alone in that, in that area. The needs are specific, and they require specific attention. Also, our students are transversing on many, going to different many communities and cross district lines, so that also adds to the cost and their needs as well. So the state, as I said, through various initiatives, collaboration, the several collaboratives were formed that took transportation, the North River Collaborative was an outshoot of this, this consolidated effort several years ago, funding to get them up online. Marty brings a lot of knowledge from Case Collaborative. So there's various collaboratives and collaboration across the state on how can we save money in transportation. Since they moved into the area of cost-sharing reviews, I have had the privilege of working with over a dozen school districts. And what I see is, is consistent across the Commonwealth. Plymouth is not alone. The challenges are real. When we come in, we look at everything from the, how the Special Ed Department sees transportation, their knowledge of transportation, how to go about providing transportation services to maximize that child's benefit, and also maintaining in price, price, price points and keeping the cost maintainable for, for district, for the district. We were very impressed with the Plymouth Public Schools and the Special Ed Administrator, Stacy. They have a full working knowledge of the needs, and they do not go above and beyond. You know, in some cases, we've seen overuse of monitors or overuse of certain conditions, and Plymouth really does the best they can and maintains those, those costs. The IEPs, again, like I said, they have very good knowledge about that, and so there's two situations with Plymouth. One, you have a very large in-district population. I'm going to defer to Marty on that for some point, because as you saw in the report, we looked at if Plymouth, due to their number, could potentially run their own transportation system, and there would be cost savings. Then there's the out-of-district transportation, where you're really at the whim of who's available to transport your students. This is common throughout the state, whether it be Special Education, homeless transportation, or foster care. It's a very big challenge for districts. The, the way to save money in out-of-district transportation is cost share, ride share. We really encourage, and we did make recommendation, if you go out to bid, which, it is exempt from 30B, but we advocate, go out for bid, go out for quotes, to keep it competitive, to, to put language in that you, you, as Plymouth, own the vehicle through that contractor, but you encourage ride sharing, excuse me, so you can have a cost benefit to that. And we, we've done that throughout the state in some cases. It really can work well. But just to work with the vendors, and as Gary had indicated, Special Ed vendors are becoming more like the big bus vendors. Your smaller companies are being bought up by larger companies, and there's fewer and fewer providers. So again, it does, you know, lay out the landscape that maybe it's time to look at doing things a little differently, and that would be in the area of running your own. As we indicated in our report, would make sense to start with an in-district transportation. The out-of-district changes, you have so many different variables, and you can possibly work into that, and then again, keep, look for quotes on out-of-district transportation. So we did go through, and I hope you all had a chance to read the report, and we can entertain questions after, but I think the big, the big thing was the in-district transportation. And as was noted in here, there was a considerable savings, close to eight-hundred thousand dollars, but that does not include health insurance, which we know is a big cost. That would be a cost, retirement benefits, and so that's, that's a number, but there is definitely savings to be had, and Marty can walk you through a little bit about how we determined that and what we looked at for that.
Sure. Well, thanks for having us. Happy to be here. Hopefully we can shed some light on some savings as I talked about. What's nice about, when I was looking at the cost of this coming year's budget for in-district transportation, one and a half million dollars, it's quite high for two-hundred-and-forty-some odd students. What's nice about Plymouth, like some communities, even the ones I represent, you still have tiers in your, in your class, in your grade levels. A lot of districts are starting to go to one, one time, and that's another subject. Because of the tiering that you have with the different arrivals at the various school levels, from kindergarten all the way up to the high school levels, it allows you to use that same vehicle for three, three different tiers. Thus, you can save less cars on the road than transporting. So taking the budget that was from your present provider, looking at his cost per day for a hundred and eighty days of this one and a half million dollar budget, when I broke it down to, and I use numbers that I have where I am now, I have a six-million-dollar budget for the Case Collaborative that I'm responsible for. We have about five hundred students we transport from ten school districts, so I have ten bosses and superintendents. As you can see by the numbers that's on page twelve of the report, that does not include, as Colleen said, the insurance, but if you break down the insurance, you, probably around two-hundred thousand dollars of that could possibly be going out to health insurance if you do a percent of the employees that needed or were taken, a family plan, a single plan. It could roughly be about two-hundred thousand dollars. And if you take that from the savings of seven-hundred-plus thousand here, you still could see a substantial savings. You would control and operate your own in-town transportation. Taking the present two-hundred-and-forty-eight students, I believe it was, that I looked at, and you take the one-point-five million dollars, it's about four-hundred-and-thirty-five That, I took the numbers of what it would cost to buy a new vehicle, what it would cost to insure the vehicle, what the pay might be, at a decent pay for the driver, so you retain that, those drivers, the fuel cost for the vehicle, insurance, the maintenance of the vehicle, GPS units in the vehicle, so you can really keep an eye on the folks and help them out when they're lost, if you will, and two-way communication. The only other thing you would need to provide that isn't in here is some space for a dispatcher, a transportation manager. That all could come out of that savings, but you control your costs, you control all the drivers, you know who you hire. They're all under your guise, the query reports, the finger reports come to you. Unlike the vendors that you might hire from the outside, they're the ones hiring all the people. Each one of you don't look at every one of those employees' backgrounds that you might look at. We do plenty of queries on folks, fingerprints, and people come to my office and try to work, and they have a seventy license already to transport students for another vendor, and when we do their query, we sometimes don't hire them. We don't do anything drastic, but we want control over it. So that's another big factor. So you can save some money, it takes some work, there'd be some additional employees, but you're talking seven-hundred, well, even if it's two-hundred thousand off that, you're talking over five-hundred thousand dollars a year, and it wouldn't cost you that much for a dispatcher and an office and a manager to manage it.
And also, Plymouth Public Schools has the TransFinder rooting software, which would be optimal to do for the in-district transportation. Out-of-district, no, that's, there's too many variables, but in-district, you can really set up the run. So I think Plymouth has an opportunity, whether hire your own drivers, or you could have, you could, we also made a recommendation, look into several collaboratives. There's North River in your area, Cape Cod isn't, isn't far, that they're both experienced in transportation, looking to them for maybe cost proposals, how they could facilitate with you, but I think there's an opportunity, and at the bare minimum, if you were to go out and bid, I would put your roots together, and I'd go out and ask for prices, and you know what the vans are doing. Because right now, how we came up with this, is you're paying per student per day, but you don't really know how many vans and what they're doing, and how many tiers. It's working well, and when we don't have a headache or a problem, and I know there were some issues, but I heard transportation as well, the service provider is doing a nice job, and at the end of the day, it's the safety of our students and parents' satisfaction if you want to be sure, you know, and they are reading O.C., so I'm not, I'm not saying what you're doing isn't, isn't good. Could it be better if you ran your own? As we all know, whenever we run an arm, we have more control, and I think that's, that's what we come into. But you can also have more control in the way you structure a bid and put that out. And then you know exactly what the vans are doing, you're controlling that van, so you can bid a per-van price per day, and Plymouth Public Schools runs them, and you may not have employees, and that, so I think there's a lot of different options. What I would recommend, where you have a June thirtieth end date of this current contract, is that I would be working on this before the first of the year, you know? You can get things in order, you know, and even go out to bid, look for RFPs. I've heard there are some new vendors coming into the state that are going to do Special Education Transportation, which is encouraging, because it is a problem, and getting drivers is a problem. So those are all considerations that, that you need to take in, into consideration. However, we do think there, there are savings to be had with transportation.
Savings are, I've been to a few of these meetings, and savings are a big factor, no question, but control over all these people, all the drivers. I predict here, with the two forty, two hundred and forty-eight students, that we probably need about twenty-one drivers to do all the tiers, and to get all the kids to school timely. So, big factor is, if they're your employees, your town employees, you have control over them, you know who they are, you know who you're hiring, there's a, there's a lot to be said about that part of the, the system. Saving money is good, yeah, it's important, I understand that. We talk about it a lot, but it's nice that we know who we have working for us, so it's something to think about.
Intriguing idea, but the devil is always in the details, huh? Committee members, the floor is open. Let me ask, while everybody's getting ready, what are the upfront costs? We don't, we don't own any vans right now.
Well, you can lease, there are outfits out there that'll lease the vans on MHQ, there are a few others, that you can lease the vans. They're about forty thousand dollars a big van, but.
So the half-a-million-dollar profit now would be reduced by the leasing fees?
No, that's based here on, on my sheet, it's about, if your lease is a five-year lease, and you're paying, and paid it off at forty-five dollars a day, you use forty-five dollars a day as a number, and that's based on a hundred and eighty days, and I'm sure you're aware that many of these kids go more than a hundred and eighty days. They might be more like two-hundred-and-twenty days that these kids are going to school, but these fixed numbers, not the payroll maybe, but the, the insurance cost, most of the maintenance costs. most of the maintenance costs, the vehicle cost are based on 180 days cost. And if you're riding 100, 210 days or 220 days, like I said, a lot of the students go to summer schools. I know I have, last, this past summer, I had 500 students during the year and I had about 450 of those 500 students going during the summer, so.
Ms. Badger, did I see your hand go up before?
It did, sorry. I guess my question is, in a lot of what, when I was reading this, a lot of what you've already said kind of brings up some of my questions. So if we have almost $800,000 savings and then we have to employ two employees, from what I'm hearing, a dispatcher and someone to manage everything. Transport, the, we've got the transportation manager and that includes a whole slew of insurance and everything else. So that brings it down to what? Like probably at this point, you're talking of $450,000. I don't know how much a transportation manager gets paid. I have absolutely no idea.
I'm not telling you.
And so I, I mean, it's a huge savings, but then I wonder, you know, we had, I don't know if it's an issue, but we have our own bus drivers in town that we've had issues with before. And so is that, like you said, it's devils in the details. Is, is that something that administration-wise, we can actually handle?
I think you would need, maybe you could have two part-time dispatchers. You could have somebody that works the morning and, because you don't need somebody full-time.
Full-time, okay.
And the transportation person, you could have one coordinator at the salary. Anywhere from 50 to 70.
Mr. Costin.
Sure, thank you. I think you could, you could, using simple numbers, it's fair to say we could possibly save a half million dollars a year if we ran our own transportation. That being said, there are some unknowns that we, we would have to calculate in there. But I think what I take away from the report, excuse me, is that if we were to try and, if we wanted to begin to think about running our own transportation system, that is a lengthy process to plan. We also have to get approval from town meeting because we have to lease vehicles. We can't simply just go out and do that. You also have the insurance discussion.
Yes.
If you want to bring that many people onto town insurance. Understanding that we don't only pay their insurance while they're active, but also when they retire. So those are kind of calculations I think you would need to build in. While this is, this is a great number and a calculation, looking at it, I think we'd have to do a much more in-depth analysis. And I don't think it's something that can be done next year. So having said that, when you look at this report, you notice that our real, our real area where we can improve is our in-district transportation, cost basis only. We're above state average and, and you mentioned that we, we are, we're expensive. So I think if you, if you look at the recommendations, the two options that I look at would be having conversations with a collaborative. That would also save us money to see if we could work with an existing collaborative who has experience and who will also, like Marty does, manage the headaches for us.
Yes.
And the other option would be to go out to bid, to do an RFP and see if we can do something relatively soon so that we get a price on what, what cost would be for next year. And I do believe that there, there are, and I won't mention the companies. There are companies that are in the larger bus business who are considering going into special education. So there may be some competition. So I think those are the two avenues that my recommendation would be. I think the study is great. It gives us a way to look forward. But to try those at this point. And if we want to go forward and look at managing, have a conversation.
Mr. Sully.
If it is in front of town meeting and it's brought forward as an article under the parameters of our school budget, correct? Would it also be brought capital improvement?
I, I think that you, the argument or presentation is that we're paying for the vehicles out of savings. So they would be in our budget. The issue is that the Municipal Modernization Act requires any leasing, as we had to do with SOLA, to go forward to, and get approval of town meeting.
Just a note on the vehicles, while you're talking about that. The proposal that I have on here, if you were to purchase the vehicles, that is based on a five-year payoff. That doesn't mean you're not going to run those vehicles for another two years, depending on their condition. And in a lot of cases, if it's just in-town travel, unlike a lot of out-of-district routes, might cover a lot more mileage, their mileage not be so great that you would need to dispose of that vehicle after five years. So the subsequent years, that $45 a day is gone because you paid for it. You own it now. So I'm just, that's something to think about down the road. Just a thought.
Is it possible to phase something like this? And suppose we purchased a vehicle and established a route for a school and then expanded year after year? Is that possible?
It, it is possible. We do run a number of vans now for special ed with our project growth. And we have five, five vans that we run now. The issue is segmentation of...
The issue is what?
Segmentation.
Segmentation?
If we have, segmenting the routes, if we have an issue with a student or we're going two different places. If we have a route, we need, someone needs to keep track of that route and oversee it. If the driver's out sick, there's no one to cover. So it's kind of, we don't do to and from school routes a lot. We do, we do some in our vans, but I think that's one of the concerns. But yes, we could look at that. We would just have to take that off of our, you know, our bid spec.
The option with the collaborative, if I'm, if, say the collaborative doesn't really, I don't know. I guess my question is, is it ever a situation where the collaborative can't help us out with all of our bus routes? And would it be multiple, like groups of people? I mean, we've got one side of town that might be close to Cape Cod Collaborative versus... I guess my question is, can one collaborative really cover what we need?
I think that's something we would investigate. We've talked about north-south routes. It may be more, and that's the, segmenting the routes as I was talking about. You know, this child's on this vendor, this child's on that vendor. And it requires a little bit more coordination. I think that if we were to speak with the collaboratives, I mean, we'd have an honest discussion and say, is this too big for this collaborative or that collaborative? Are you, collaborators run a lot of buses. I, I used to work in Western Mass. I mean, Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative ran hundreds of vans. So it depends on the appetite, I think, of the collaborative. But we would be entering a relationship. We'd have to make a commitment to them for a number of years.
They don't always go to their neighborhood schools either. They go, it's...
So at the end of this academic year, we are looking for a new vendor?
We will be doing, even though it is, it is exempt from procurement laws, we, we do RFPs or a bid proposal. We will put it out. And I think we also have a discussion. We need to investigate collaboratives, see if, because that could be a savings for us too.
Absolutely. So actually, this is a really timely presentation for us because we have to be thinking about the details here. Dr. Mayestis?
See, even with collaboratives, there, there's still a, a level of management that takes place. And I know through Stacy's office, there, there's, the more people we add to the mix, it's more management from, from the special education office because there's more vendors to work with. So I think any solution that we have moving forward is, is of course monetarily is really, is, is very important. But the product that we have and, and the times that students are in vans, the quality of service is, is very important to us. And as Dr. Rogers can tell you, last year was a challenging year for, for us. Special education transportation-wise, for a number of reasons. But that, that's what prompted this study, to look at options. Of course, I think we, we understood what the options were, but I think there's some, there's some dollar figures associated with it to actually motivate some discussion one way or another. So I think this study has really allowed us to, to digest exactly where we are. And it's given us a level of, of thought on, on what our plan is to move forward or what we need to do. And it, it might be a hybrid. It might be a phasing. It might be... You know, we, we have run vans before and we have our own challenges with that. You know, we have our athletic buses that we manage and run and those have their own challenges. So, and as you all remember, we've had to struggle here in Plymouth with benefits. And how do we, the big push in this community is how do we minimize the role? How many people are, are taking those benefits?
Yes.
And that's what we've tried to do over time because it's a long-term cost issue. So we have to weigh all that before we actually bring some to this table. That would be our final recommendation, but it may come in, in pieces. But again, I think we're at a point where we have to start contemplating based on where we are in this time and space with, with contracts and with the choice of vendors that we, we do have. And, you know, Mr. Costin has, has done this quite frequently. And, you know, we were able to do something with, with our regular day buses, which was a long-term contract, which is, you know, you know, I, I will tell, I'm not sure if you read the MASC resolutions that are up for November. They just came out. And what them has to do with special education and regular day transportation. And, and how to break that apart a little bit. So it's timely, like Dr. Sorensen says, but we have some work to do.
Well, I, I actually think I, I speak for the school committee when I say we appreciate this presentation. It's very timely for us. We do have to make a decision. I'm sort of hoping that if you folks study the numbers and the feasibility, you'll come back to us with more information. It would be great to be on town meeting floor next spring and showing town meeting that we could save money over the period of 10 years substantially, like we did with SOLA, if we went in this direction, if it's feasible. I think that would, that makes sense. I'm getting nods around the table, so we will, eager to hear more about this. Thank you very much for the report and for being here to give it to us.
I do have to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you think by spring that there would be some sort of decision and/or, what's it called? Something that could be presented at town meeting? I mean, that seems very soon.
We, we would have to have an article in way before that. If we want to. Purchase vehicles, lease purchase vehicles.
Yeah, that's why I said it's timely. We have to do this now.
Yeah, because we...
But my question...
The thing is, we have a budget meeting, so that's, so the budget's pretty well set.
I think we, we need to build our budget as we know it now.
Exactly.
And then if we make an adjustment.
No, I guess the, the question is, is to Mr. Costin. I just didn't, because he'd mentioned before that though this is timely, we actually have to be intentional in terms of how this is, you know, sorted out. So I just didn't, I just thought that spring would be so soon if June is an issue.
To do that.
Okay.
For the next town meeting.
Okay. You, you said, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
No, I didn't hear.
Would be challenging.
It'd be challenging.
Oh, challenging. Okay, that makes sense. That absolutely makes sense.
Everything we do is challenging.
No, and, and I honestly agree. Just having gone through contracts this last time. You know, adding an addition of, of what, close to 25 new people? And then how are they coming in if they've already worked for the service? Like, you know, are they coming in as, you know, tiered employees? Are we coming in at the, you know, a certain, it's just, it's a lot of... I just think of bringing that to the town and, and what they would, you know, how they would receive that. So it's a lot to undertake.
Thoughts, Dr. Mayestis?
I think it's important that we set our sights on what is going to be the long-term solution.
Yes.
And I think even though it might take a little longer, the most important thing is that there's some level of predictability.
Yeah, yes.
And sustainability. And, and keep in mind, this discussion started about quality, right? So I think the quality is really important. And I'll speak for Dr. Rogers. I, I mean, it was painful last year with special education and, you know, phone calls that were real legitimate issues that we need to sort out because of the newness of a vendor and newness of routes, newness of new drivers, new this, new that. Those growing pains, no matter what direction we go, are, they still exist because, you know, Plymouth is, as you know, we have a lot of roads.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Dr. Sorensen, just to, to wrap up, so...
Twice I try to end this agenda item.
I'm sorry. I think it would be imperative if, if we give you an update as to down, down the road next month or so, if we think something that can actually get on the agenda or, or it needs to be deferred for, for a future town meeting based on the progress we can or can't make. That's only my suggestion.
Okay, we'll be looking forward to that either way.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any committee member who wants to reference anything from the old business docket? From the old business docket? Anything? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to move on. New business, committee members with new business items. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm going to move on. Report, Ms. Superintendent, Dr. Mayestis.
Yes, I have three items to report on this evening. Just want to remind the school committee that tomorrow night, we are at the town hall for a six o'clock joint meeting with the board of selectmen. One thing that I want to bring to the school committee's attention, and I know some of you are aware of it because it's been in the news and, and local newspaper here regarding Stevens Field. Stevens Field is going to begin construction and that is going to limit access to Stevens Field parking lot. The Plymouth Public Schools, primarily Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, uses the north end of that parking lot to queue buses up at the end of the day. The new design of Stevens Field is actually going to block that off, which is going to pose a significant challenge for us and transportation to Nathaniel Morton. As you know, transportation around this corridor here is extremely challenging. We have had a few meetings with the town to kind of figure out what this model will be. We met with the principal Spencer to kind of walk through what that traffic may, may be. David Gould, who is the Environmental Resources Director for the town of Plymouth, is in charge of the project. I've, I've actually met with him and we've gone over a few options. They're going to try to keep that north end parking lot accessible to the buses as long as we possibly can this school year, which will probably be December, January. But there's a strong possibility that after December, January, we will have to find some other location for those buses to, to queue up in the afternoon. In the morning, it's not so much of a problem because, you know, buses come one at a time. They're staggered. In the afternoon, they queue up to pick up. So we're going to have to look at that. And one thing that we did talk with Principal Spencer about is we will communicate to parents what those traffic patterns will be. It is very challenging from Water Street, right here on, on our street, Lincoln. So it's, it's a, it's a challenge, okay? So we will keep up to date on that and when we have more information, we'll pass along. And last Friday, we had the opportunity to have a Plymouth graduate from Plymouth Carver Regional High School, class of 1983. And we had this gentleman who is actually a Hollywood producer and writer who actually was in school here and then came to visit with our kids. And we did a gathering at Plymouth North and his name is Chris Albrigini. Chris has been very active in his professional career and has been, has written and produced a number of, of shows, sitcoms. He's actually doing the, right now, he's producing and writing the 90210 remix, which is out now. And he had a, I think he had a wonderful time. And Ms. Hunt actually was not necessarily a classmate, graduated a year after he did. Sorry to give away when you graduated.
Yeah, thanks. I'm a year younger than Chris.
So there, there you go. So, but I'll tell you, you know, what, my takeaway from his visit was everything that we talked about at opening day, about kids being firm, about what they need and how they challenge themselves and no matter what happens, you, you got to pursue your passion no matter how many times you find it difficult in life. And he shared some stories about how he started from bottom, from the bottom, just with a typewriter, typing notes, all the way to him having scripts that people depend on. And I know Ms. Hunt, you were there and I'm not sure if you have any comments to it. But it was, I thought it was a wonderful testament to Plymouth. But it's also, I think it was very important for this community to recognize that... it was very important for this community to recognize that a former graduate wanted to come and spend time with kids.
Yes.
To, to share his experiences. So, like I said, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add, but...
Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, well, that's what I would have mentioned, is that it was actually his idea to come. So I, I had reached out to him. We were, we, um, we were classmates, and we were, kind of did the same. We actually were very involved in AFS and exchange students, and we both remember Mrs. Burgess from back when we were in school together. We spent a lot of time with, going on, we went on a lot of exchanges together. We spent a week at New York, in New York City and with school. So, um, as it happens, there's actually three Plymouth alumni working on that show. So I reached out to all three of them to ask them if they wouldn't mind doing a little, like a three-part spotlight on, um, on the Plymouth alumni page. And actually, one of them is a good friend of mine who did graduate with me, but he's doing all the merchandising for the show. And then there's a girl that graduated in 2014 who's a production assistant on the show. So it was just kind of cool that all three of them. So I reached out to Chris, and he said, you know, when I was in high school, I would have loved it if somebody like me came and, and talked, and, and I'd, I'd love to do that sometime. And he gave me his one day that he was in town, and I was kind of like, okay, hold the, hold the phone, you know? Picked up the phone, called Gary and, or Dr. Maestas, and we, um, we made it happen. So, but it was his idea. He really, really wanted to come, and I think he was blown away by the technology. I mean, we were walking through the auditorium, and what, he said something like, Kim, did we even have lights in the theater? And I'm like, no, we had candles. But, you know, we got to walk through, and he's like, we didn't, you know, he, both him and, and the other gentleman that works on this, does the merchandising, were like the AV guys. So their job in high school was they wheeled around the AV cart with film strips. And it was like, you guys have probably no idea what I'm talking about. But that was, that was what we did. And just walking through, seeing the TV studio, he got interviewed. We had lunch in the, um, the restaurant, and that was just mind-blowing to see. We did a lot of reminiscing. We tried to figure out if there were any teachers that are still here, that were there when we were there. And it was just a really, I, a nice opportunity. He doesn't come home very often, and I actually personally, in person, have not seen him since 1983. So it was just a nice opportunity for him to come. And, and when he was speaking to, like, the whole group in the lecture hall, it was very quiet, and we weren't sure. We were kind of like, hmm, are they, you know, is it, is it sinking in? But then afterwards, when you saw all the kids come up to him and talk to him, and they were, they were just amazed. And one kid was like, thank you so much, because I don't know if I want to go to college, and I don't know if I want to do this, and I don't know. And it was just really cool to hear. You know he definitely impacted some lives that day.
Definitely.
So it was kind of cool. So, yeah, it was good. It was a nice experience.
Yeah, and I, um, you know, I, we had the pleasure of, and, and, you know, Maeve was there on Friday and heard Mr. Parsland's morning announcements, but...
Yeah, that was funny.
He, he was, he just stood there afterwards and just clapped.
Yeah.
Because it was so different. Stark contrast from when you were in school to today, not only conditionally, environmentally, as far as other buildings look, but just the look and feel of how you were as a student from then to now.
Well, the announcements were very upbeat, and he was like crazy. Like, hey!
No, no.
And I looked at Chris and I said, I said, that's the principal. And he went, what? And I'm like, that's the principal. And he's like, no, sir. And then actually, on the way out, I, I pulled Mr. Parsland out of his office and introduced him to Chris.
That's great.
And he was like, that was amazing, because our principal started out every single, and maybe, I don't know if you remember or not either, but did you, our principal started out every meet, every morning by going, will the following recalcitrants please come to the office? And he just listed all the bad kids. And that's, that's how it happened, right? Am I right? Yeah?
When I was there, it was assemblies of...
Yeah, and it wasn't anything like that.
All right, let's not digress too far, okay?
Yeah.
So I'm done.
And he remembers you, too.
Didn't have any.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for Dr. Maestas on his report? Okay. Then, any communications, Mr. Morgan?
No communication tonight.
Reports and proposals from committee members. The floor is open. Committee members with reports and proposals.
It's only been a week.
Speak now, forever hold your peace.
It's only been a week.
Okay, I don't see any hands. We're moving along. PYDC, I don't suppose there's a report because you just gave us one.
Well, well, we did have a meeting Friday, actually.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We did have a meeting Friday, and it was, it kind of was wrapping things up. And there was one thing that was very different, though, is, you know, they have the personality questionnaire that they give to the students that, to find out who's at risk or whatever, is my little answer.
Prevent a trip.
Oh, we took it, yes.
Oh, you took it.
We took it.
Let me see that, Margie. Let me see that, Margie. Go ahead, I'll look this over.
I think Margie scored extremely high on sensation seeking.
Huh?
Sensation seeking, that's what you scored high on, I think.
On the what?
Sensation seeking.
Oh, me, I'm going to take it, take off, thanks. He hasn't got my answers. My answers are over here.
Margie, it says you want to ride a motorcycle?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Oh, then you're not a sensation seeker.
No, I don't. I'm not a sensation, I'm not that kind of a sensation seeker, right? I don't want to break my bones anymore.
So that's it on that report?
So anyway, but beyond that, Healthy Plymouth, I'm, I gotta get this. Healthy Plymouth now has, if anybody wants to go on, they have a website, but I'm trying to find it here. Oh, it's healthyplumeth.org. It's very simple. So it's online, and it goes along with, um, there's a wellness committee meeting on, on, uh, October 22nd in the Mayflower Room at Lincoln Street. So I, I think Vedna goes to that, does she?
That's the district wellness committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, anyway, uh, they had, uh, they were talking about 11-6, there's a Train the Trainer on acute crisis where children are. There's Americana Education Initiative that'll be on Tuesday, 11-5, at Plymouth South High, 6:30 at night. So that's, that's really about what I have on the...
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the PYDC report, or any additions, or anybody? Okay, Building Committee?
On the Building Committee, um, yeah, that was Thursday night. It was quite busy right there, between the two. But anyway, the Russell Street parking deck is sealed. And so anyway, they're working it out with the contractor because they had to put in a better sealer than what, what was going to be done. The other thing, of course, is that they do have to shore up the Burial Hill wall.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. But I think I mentioned that before. Maritime facility, I go to the construction meetings. It's coming along. The piles are all in, and it's, you could, now if you drive down there, you can see that the first floor is coming, and the sidewalks are being put in, so it's coming along. I have a meeting Wednesday morning, again, with the, for the Construction Committee. The library's coming along well with the, all the roof chillers and skylights and things that they're doing. North Plymouth Fire Station, now, it's not very complete, but it's 28.54% complete, and expect it to be done in June. And, um, let's see, the Fire Department Headquarters Roof, they're work, they're working on that. And there's a structural assessment being done for that. And they're looking at a chiller for the Memorial Hall HVAC system, and engineers from Veterans, Veterans is not our veterans, but Veterans is the name of the contractor. They're doing a walkthrough on it. So, and they're also looking at the fire station and, and the police station roof to see if they need new roofs. That's what, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. Now, next, next meeting's important because I won't be able to be there because of the surgery, so. And it'll be good if you could go to PYDC that, the next one.
Yeah, I, yeah, you probably have to, hopefully someone can send me some information.
Yeah.
Regarding when they meet.
Okay, on our agenda tonight, there's only two action items, and we're ready for the first one, which is homeschool. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight we have one homeschool plan that has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and it met all requirements set forth by the Plymouth School Committee, and I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Mr. Selly moves it, is seconded by Ms. Badja. Are there any questions on this motion? Okay, please vote.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm not on the, I'm enjoying the meeting. I had, okay, here we go.
Everybody has voted in favor. And the other action item this evening is the warrant. Ms. Hunt?
Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant, number S-091919, dated September 19th, 2019, in the amount of $997,038.50 as presented.
There's the motion, seconded by Ms. Badja. Is there a question on this motion? Okay, can we vote for this one, please? Everybody has voted in favor. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the school committee tonight? I'm seeing no hands. Okay, thank you very much. We stand adjourned at eight o'clock.